I'd like to open the extra planning board of October 24th, 2019, and begin by introducing the members tonight. My right, your left out there. Alternate Robin Tyner is with us, and next to her is Peter Steckler. Also an alternate, regular member Gwen English is next. Our selectmen board's representative Nico Appicott-Stantis, excuse me. And next to him, our illustrious clerk Pete Cameron. I'm Langdon Plummer, chairman of the board. And Aaron Brown, our vice chair, to my left, your right. And let's see, oh, John Gruder is there. And on the far end is Jen Martell. Town planner Dave Sharple's. And Daniel Holger is our recording secretary this evening. Okay, I would like to start by reading a little letter here regarding the first case. Dear Mr. Sharple's, Varsely Wireless respectfully request permission to withdraw without prejudice its application for the above-preferenced relief for a wireless communications facility at the property. Well, I didn't read all of the detail at the top. The application is scheduled to be heard at the planning board on October 24th, 2019. In light of this request, Varsity Wireless requests that the withdrawal without prejudice be granted without the need for its representatives to attend the October 24th hearing. Please contact me if a representative is required to attend. Thank you for your consideration of this matter. Please do not hesitate to contact me if you have any questions. This is signed by Brian Grossman. So that cases will not be heard tonight.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, please.
I move at the request of varsity wireless case number 19-02 to be withdrawn without prejudice be granted.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Voice vote is okay. Let's see now. I've got to count people. One, two, three, four, six, seven. Let's see. Peter, how about you acting tonight? All right, so you can vote. So those in favor, please indicate by granting this waiver. Excuse me, motion, thank you. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next. An application of I.S. Realty Trust for a proposed subdivision of an existing 5.58 acre parcel located at 100nd and Street into five single-family lots and associated site improvements, and a wetlands conditional use permit for proposed impacts to the wetland buffer. Subject property is situated in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District in its tax map parcel 104-71 in its case number 19-13. And I'd asked Dave if the case is ready to be heard.
Well, I had... It was to be ready to be heard, but I just was speaking with a representative of I.S. Realty just right before the meeting. And they're here to ask for a continuance until the November 21st planning board meeting at 7:00 p.m. So I would not recommend accepting the plans complete for review purposes or holding the public hearing this evening. That will start the clock, the representatives of I.S. Realty for me that they weren't ready to present tonight. So they're asking to be continued to the November 21st meeting at 7:00 p.m. And for any abutters that are here tonight for that, that got noticed that now that we're postponing it, I mean continuing it until a date certain, you won't receive another notice. You won't receive another notice, but it will be on the agenda for November 21st, planning board meeting at 7:00 p.m. If the board continues the application.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I move at the request of the applicant for case number 19-13 to be tabled. Until, or is it tabled or continued, Dave?
Continued.
Continued.
You can't table.
Continued until the meeting, the planning board meeting November 21st at 7:00 p.m.
Second.
Moved in second. I don't think we need any discussion. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? The ayes have it. Thank you for coming. Finally to spend an evening with us. I'm sorry to disappoint you.
Yeah.
The reason why I use continuance, just to differentiate it from table means it's on and off the table. You didn't accept the plans, the clock, the statutory timeframe for review has not started. So I'd just like to be, you know, use the word continued.
Makes sense.
Yeah, because you can't table it because there's nothing before us.
It's never been on the table.
Okay.
Wait a minute.
Mr. Chair. Yes, you had a question, ma'am.
Yeah. Either one, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Kristen Doherty.
A little closer, please.
I'm sorry, my name's Kristen Doherty, and I'm one of the residents on Patricia Ave. And we were wondering whether or not the neighbors are going to be included in any of this.
They are.
Many of us are confused about what's going on. We've gotten several different stories, and we're kind of worried about it turning into a cut-through street. So I just wanted to make sure that we were notified because we have about 30 children in that neighborhood and one bus stop. And it's kind of nerve-wracking for us parents.
If you're not a direct abutter, you will not get notification. But you are a landowner and taxpayer, and these are public meetings. So pay attention to when the meeting's happening and come on down because we need to hear from you.
Right.
For all intent purposes, you practically are abutters, but sorry, not quite.
Yeah, I understand. We just wanted to make sure that we weren't getting worked up about nothing, you know? And if it is something, we wanted to kind of know in advance what the situation was.
Yep.
November 21st.
November 21st.
I'd also encourage you to, because all our files are public, we have a file on this property, they submitted an application. I'd be happy if you came in or others came in to sit down and show the plan that they're proposing at this time, to show where the roads located, how many lots, et cetera. Be happy to do that anytime. We're open 8:00 to 4:30, Monday through Friday. So prior to the 21st, you can come to the 21st here and definitely do that because they'll have the public hearing and allow the public input. But in the interim, if you want to understand it better, please stop by the planning office. We'd be happy to explain it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. I...
Should have thought of that.
Yeah, yeah. No, well, he has.
The planning board and the planning board is also here to help you. So feel free to come on down. Okay, now we'll go back to the minutes from October 10th. I didn't read the agenda very closely. So if you'll...
No, I think that was the way to do it. You know what I mean?
Yes. Well, it works thick.
Yeah, get them out of there. Bye.
All right, come by. I'll be there.
Bye.
Okay. Pete, have you got anything on the minutes? Or anybody else as far as that goes?
Well, let me see here.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, do you want me to jump in?
Go right ahead.
All right. So line 47, where it says, "Believe it was forested in 2014." I don't know if you want to clarify that not forested as in the condition, but harvested or logged in 2014?
Oh, I see what you're saying. It is a forest, but you log it, yes.
Is harvested work?
It's called log.
Harvested.
Harvested.
I'm pretty sure he said forested. Because I remember that, and I was like, I don't think he just used the right word. I think he meant logged or harvested.
Yeah, he definitely meant logged.
I think he said forested, so I don't know if we can change it.
Okay.
It definitely was logged, it did not forest.
I know, and I was kind of like, okay. Is it still forested? It was in 2015.
Maybe deforested.
One day it was forested. Today it wasn't, today it is.
Let's go back then. Peter, go ahead if you've got more. I want to go back five lines.
I've got more going forward, so why don't you go backward?
43.
43, okay.
Mr. Petrotopoulos indicated Tom Monahan and Matt.
Matt.
Matt. Or did we just have?
I don't know, Matt.
I don't know.
Must have a last name.
We can check it.
Thank you.
And we'll insert the last name if...
If he has one.
Or audible.
Okay. Now we'll move to the other, Peter.
So line...
This is tag team.
I guess it was unclear to me, line 56 into 57, where they said there will be 100 to 110 parking spots. I don't know if, I mean, I think over the course of the meeting, we clarified that there were going to be a lot more than that in terms of total parking. I don't know if that refers to a specific parcel as opposed to the whole project. But what, shouldn't it turn out to be 300-something or more parking spaces in total that they clarified later on?
Yeah, they may have clarified. You're right.
I think, I remember him, if I remember correctly, I remember him saying that. I think he was referring to the back, out back, and like, oh, yeah, in this area, there'd be 100, 110 parking spots back here. Because there's much more than 100, 110. But he wasn't saying, I don't think, saying that the whole parcel, just being specific as to a location.
Let's see, I just look at line 94. Here's more than, more bedroom, one bedrooms with more than 300 spaces. Spaces, okay, so. And there are another 110 commercial spaces. That's, I'm looking at 94, so maybe...
Yeah.
Is okay the way it is?
Yeah, that's fine.
I was saying, wait a minute, yep.
Line 83 should refer to the urban compact zone, I believe. DOT's urban compact zone, not the Irving compact area. And then line 84 want to be part of the conversation, not conservation, I believe.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yep.
Before we go on to the next page.
Gee, Gwen, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to overlook you.
No, it's okay.
Pete's been, Pete, excuse me, has been so...
Quiet. On line 64.
Okay.
You're talking about the waivers, and then it said, "We'll be doing an inventory of trees, his waiver, and landscape islands." Are they looking for a waiver of the inventory of trees, the his inventory, his and landscape islands? On 64?
Well, after that, it talks about may seek relief.
And that may just mean looking at, listening to the tape again? I seem to remember it was a little, it was a little wishy-washy because he was like, "Oh, I know you're discussing the tree regulations tonight." So I think I understood it as, we'll see if I have to ask for a waiver. Okay, okay. Because they wouldn't want to survey that entire parcel. But I'm not sure how to clarify, I don't know how to clarify that. Yeah, I don't, in here.
I think that's what he said. I mean, it's design review, so it's still up in the air of what, you know, we didn't do an analysis of any waivers that needed. It's a non-binding, you know, discussion. So he was vague, like Jen said.
So this is in keeping with how his conversation was going, all right. I think it would be more clear if we said like, potentially applying for the tree inventory, his waiver, and landscape islands. Or he said they would potentially be applying for...
A waiver from?
A waiver, those three waivers, but he...
He did say that when he said may seek relief.
Yeah.
I don't know.
He didn't say he would be doing an inventory of trees, that's for sure, I don't think. So.
Thought he...
Maybe he did.
I thought he did because he was like, but he was like, may, you know, depending on what the outcome of your, you know, your discussion is, like, because he referred to, and I remember him referring to a past project saying, you know, like the Unitil site where we kind of didn't identify, you know, kind of just set an amount or provided a list.
Right.
Like half, you know, like, we did inventory the trees, maybe not put them in specific locations on the plan sets, but we'll see what you say, we may seek relief, or something like that. I thought that's what he said.
Yeah, you're right. You might be right, yeah. All right. And then on line 75, Robin, maybe if the condition of the back lot will be permanent? Is that meaning like undeveloped? Is that what you meant?
Yeah, because that's getting at, if you look at, what, 112 through 115? I missed that in 75, but that's what I was at. They were saying they have no intention of developing the backland. And what I was asking is, how is that codified?
Okay.
And is that transfer if the ownership transfers? But I think both of those, 75 through 77 and 112 to 115 are related to that discussion.
Yeah, I saw it up there.
But yes, that was, they said, hey, we don't plan to develop it. And it was like, hey, so, yeah, how do we codify it? And what happens if it gets sold? And I think Dave had an answer to that. That was a little more specific than that was there.
Could we, would it, is it acceptable to put the current undeveloped condition of the backlot be permanent? Or is that changing something?
I guess what I asked is, and that's why it's weird, it's a little awkward because I think it came up twice because it's in both places. But because they stated they have no intention of developing the backland, my question is, how do you codify it? And what happens if ownership transfers to a new buyer? So that's however to capture that in either place.
Excuse me, while we're right there.
It's kind of weird because you've got to take a sentence...
What is the proposal that was submitted to the zoning board? It says, "This proposal." I've been trying to figure out what the proposal is.
Well, they needed a variance for residential use because it wasn't allowed.
Okay.
So to the extent that they, that they showed the same plan to the zoning board and asked for relief for 224, is it 224?
224, I think.
Yeah. Residential units. That was, the variance was four.
Well, I still don't, in the context of these minutes, I don't understand what this proposal is. I mean, I understand what you've just said.
I think that's what he said.
I don't find a proposal. I don't, what is the proposal in the minutes? This proposal. Now, where is that proposal in these minutes?
I'm not following you. He's saying this plan, proposal, this, this application.
Aren't minutes supposed to be a reflection of the meeting? That's all minutes are.
Correct.
If they're not congruous or they're disjointed, that's still what they are. Our job is not to change the minutes to make them understandable.
That's true.
It's to record what was said at the meeting. So if there's nothing that says a proposal in here to your satisfaction, Pete, but it wasn't said, then the guy used language you don't like.
No, it's the, I, the language is fine. I just don't know what this proposal is. And what you're saying, Aaron, is we don't concern ourselves with what the proposal is.
No. That's not what minutes do. Minutes just record what happened at the meeting. We shouldn't be changing them because we don't like what somebody said or, you know? I get, every time I talk, it's disjointed and choppy and you guys want to, you guys want to edit me with better English.
I will withdraw.
I get what you're saying, Pete, because a proposal is usually, okay, this proposal, this application, that application technically was not presented to the zoning board. What was presented to the zoning board was a request for a variance for a residential use and of 220, up to 224 units. So technically, could he have, you know, articulated that better? Probably. But that's not what he did. He said this proposal, and I was just saying that he meant the 224 units of residential use that was prohibited in the zone that he sought and received a variance from the ZBA for. That was a prerequisite to come into the planning board and showing, submitting this proposal that he showed you.
Okay, I've withdrawn it.
Okay, anything else, Gwen?
On the back page, 224, it says, "I agree adding especially new applicants." I was trying to figure out what that meant, and then I went back and, and I think what that was is what our discussion was, is I think Dave talked about cases we might like to see the board make the decision, and I think I agreed that if it was a first-time applicant, that would be when we'd like to see the board make the first decision versus somebody who we see all the time and we, and we've seen over and over and over. Just, I, I just don't know if what's there conveys that that was... That was what the discussion was. When you say new applicants, it's people who've never come before. It's the board should make the decision versus if it's somebody who's come every year for the last 15 years. Will Dave take it? Sorry, is that confusing?
Did you read this part, by the way?
I understand what you're saying.
I didn't do that part.
I have a comment on that. I, I wasn't here, you're right, but I think there was a spelling mistake on line 229. P, it should be P-E-T-E. I'm actually on the heritage already, so I think...
That's okay.
Enough history for me. Aaron is halfway to history.
So, Mr. Chair, I have three more suggestions. Line 130, where it says, "The mitigation program encourages the town to make a prime wetlands list." I think you could either strike "prime wetlands" or change that to a prioritized project list. I think you could either strike "prime wetlands" or, um, change that to a prioritized project list.
Which is what I heard, when I listened.
Definitely not prime wetlands list. Then, line one-forty-three, I don't think that I seconded that motion, so I think maybe check the record to see who did second that. And finally, line one-eighty-eight, where it says, um, if it sees fur, I think it should say if it sees fit.
And I have one on, line one-seventeen and one-eighteen.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Fit and fur were-
One-eighty-eight.
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 Okay.
Now, where were you, Gwen?
Um, one, one-seventeen and one-eighteen. Mister, Mister Petropolis indicated to support parking the backland connects to, that doesn't make, that, I, that doesn't make sense. I'm not even sure what it means.
Yeah, he was saying that there was a little, I remember the conversation in general terms, I don't, I agree with you, I don't understand this. But he was saying that this, it support, this little area that could support some parking. Not on the backland, but right before the bridge, remember, there was like, he indicated a little parking area.
A little parking area, yeah.
But I don't know how he said it, we can check that.
Check that one, okay.
Is he referencing parking for public access?
I believe that's what he indicated.
Yep.
Mister Chair, I have one suggestion on line two-fourteen. It says, uh, Ms. Martel asked if there will be an open house, I think I said, "How did the open house go?" Because there was an open house, and I was asking for an update.
Yes, I think so.
And then, um-
How, let's see, so how would you change it then, asked?
Mrs. Martel asked-
How the open house?
How did the open house go? Something along those lines.
Okay.
So do I need to give you a change for like two-twenty-four? That maybe makes sense? Or is that, are we good? Ms. Tyner agreed adding especially new applicants doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but I, I agreed that in the case of new applicants, we might want the board to make the decision.
Okay. Excuse me, one-forty-eight-
Oh, goodness sakes.
Two-twelve, same comment.
One-forty-eight, huh?
And then two, excuse me, two-eleven, no, two-twelve. Two-eleven. There was a master plan committee yesteryear. I think we're the master plan oversight committee. And I think that's a distinction that probably should be made. But I'll leave it to Mister Brian Regert to help me.
Think you're right.
Good heavens.
It happens every once in a while.
I know. I'm overwhelmed.
I think we said master plan committee. I think we do abbreviate and say master plan committee.
Thank you.
You've called us all kinds of things.
Yeah, but there was a master plan-
Steering committee.
Yeah, whatever it was.
This one is the master plan, I was like, I think we call it master plan committee, for abbreviation sake, for really-
So I'm open to a motion, uh, accepting with corrections as noted?
I would so move.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Did you say Pete, Peter?
Yeah.
Nico.
Oh, Nico, oh, okay. That, maybe that's how we get confused. All right, moved and seconded. I think we've discussed it thoroughly. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? We've accepted it as noted, with changes as noted, or corrections as noted. All right. Master planned, master plans, what, we just corrected that, what's the name of that thing? Oversight Committee Discussion?
I don't know, we have our discussion now?
Yeah, we're having a meeting tomorrow.
Oh, good, okay.
Eight o'clock.
Standard report, they're always-
Yeah, it is, it is.
Well, just to color it in a bit, I got the, I got the, uh, first cut of the, uh, potential zoning amendment regarding, uh, the incentivizing affordable housing, uh, from Horsley-Witten Group as part of the MTAG grant we've been, you know, I think everyone is aware of, and, and I just got it, and I just sent it out to the master plan oversight committee. I will send it to everyone, I just didn't have time, I'll send it to everyone tomorrow. It's a first draft, so, and I already have some questions, uh, but the goal is basically, it's, it's, it's a form-based code that, uh, in the C-one district, you can take advantage of it, but the only way you can take advantage of it, and it reduces some parking, dense, uh, all, density kind of, it lets parking and, uh, height, you know, be the limiting factors, uh, to development, removes the density, but, you know, that's capped anyway, you can, if, you know, you have to park it, you have to, you know, go up height, does allow, uh, a provision for the planning board to waive parking, uh, if they so choose. So it gives you a little flexibility there, but it's all contingent upon providing at least ten percent of the units to be affordable for at least thirty years. So you cannot take advantage of it if, and get those, you know, density waived, basically don't have to follow the zoning, uh, only if you create, uh, development with twenty, uh, ten percent affordable units, rental or sale. So, we'll be, I'll be, uh, we're gonna hash that over, I'm sure it's gonna change a little bit, I have, I just read it twice, and I gotta probably read it about eight more times.
It's not an easy read.
No, it's dense, um, gotta understand how it's applied, and, you know, um, and how the board will, will use it. But I will send what I have to the rest of the board tomorrow. Feel free, if you have any comments or questions, you know, directly, you know, just, just email them directly to me. But we will be, you know, Horsley-Witten Group will come when we get to a point soon enough, probably, uh, maybe November seventh, a couple of weeks, will come and present to the board, uh, maybe the twenty-first, but one will present to the board, so we'll have the consultant here to go over everything and answer any questions, but I'll get you the draft, because I just got it. That's all.
It's their usual thorough job.
Horsley-Witten Group, yeah.
Okay.
Mister Chair, can we clarify the November dates that we're meeting? Is it the seventh and the twenty-first?
Correct.
Okay.
It would have been the fourteenth, but then it couldn't have been the twenty-eighth, because that's Thanksgiving. So instead of doing two back-to-back meetings, you know, like the fourteenth and the twenty-first, or, you know, three in December, we're just, I think that was decided a long time ago with you and Barb at the beginning of the year.
So, November, we shift first and third.
Okay.
And then December, we are gonna have back-to-back, I believe.
Yeah, I'd have to check them. I, I just kept track of them.
Yeah, okay, that's too far ahead.
November, that's too- If we can accom- if we can accommodate it, that's what we like to do, to have, you know, be able to spread it out, in case you wanted to table an item for two weeks, it's hard to table an item and get responses back. Yeah, in a week, because you, you send out the packets the next morning, so, we try to keep that two-week if at all possible.
Okay, thank you.
I'll ask Barb to send it out to us.
Yeah.
Good to know, it's planning board members when we're supposed to be there. So we can get our parties and all other activities aligned.
Yeah, it's coming up quick.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? Anybody have a motion?
I have one, just to follow up, has anyone given any thought to consideration to designate the town planner? Or my designee, which I'd probably, you know, I'd use Kristen, uh, to, to provide, you know, to make decisions on fertilizer waiver requests in accordance with the zoning ordinance. I did hear what Robin said, I think you could go a few different ways, you could say, "Nope, just come to the board, fine." Or you could designate myself or my designee, so I, you know, and then that would get it into staff's hands. Or you could say designate me or my designee, um, but with the caveat that, uh, it only applies to, uh, applicants who have previously requested waivers. And then initial waiver requests will come to the board. So like automatically, I think, I know P.A., they've had several-
P.A.'s, yes.
They, they would qualify, and I think there's maybe a couple others that might qualify as well.
School district ever done anything along those lines?
I don't know if I'm aware of.
They comply.
I don't think we've given waivers to anybody else. Maybe we have.
Yeah.
Yeah, of course. But that's why we-
Yeah, and a couple for construction sites-
Yeah.
Given for the year to establish the thing, so if, in theory, if a couple of those came back, they didn't start, you know, and they say, "Hey, you know, we, you granted a waiver, but, you know, it expired, but we haven't done it yet, can we get it extended?" And, and we could probably handle that internally if you did that, because that's a repeat request, if you will.
Yeah, yeah.
That sounds good.
Okay with that?
Should we have a report at some time if there's like X number of people came up for waivers? And just, not that we have to count or see or know as much as, if there's a change in the rules, it's interesting to know how many people are applying at some point? Is that like an annual thing? You're nodding, isn't it?
Well, they, they-
Saying it's safe to you, because I'm sure I see it very well.
David, you can give us a list, right?
All, all- Well, all I would do was, I would, as I said at the last meeting, I mean, under town planner items, and I could do field modifications slash fertilizer waivers.
Yes.
And then just say none requested, or, you know, if, if one came up, I would say what it was and who got it-
Yep.
For what, and explain it.
That's good, that sounds good to me, yep.
I don't expect many.
I think our hope with the fertilizer, um, ordinance is that it's, I have to be careful how I word this, but I, our hope is that people who have applied for the waiver and continue to apply for the, a waiver, that at some point, we, we want the, we want the biology of the soil to be improving so that they're not having to apply so many different products to the landscape, so, I mean, that's our, that's kind of our goal, is that the health of the soil just improves to the stage where they're growing strong, good grass, where they want to have grass. And I know on the academy, it's tricky, because one, they've added fields that weren't part of their plan in the beginning, they've, they dug up some fields and needed to reseed, and because of that, they had to ask for a waiver, but am I making, am I making sense?
I think you're kind of making sense, at least what you're making me think about is that we don't want it to be a repeat, "Oh, yeah, we approved that last year, so let's rubber stamp for this year," because maybe there was a specific reason it was approved, and it shouldn't necessarily be approved every year, but it might be that they needed a waiver for an integral time period until they got to a position where they could be in compliance with what we want the rules to be.
There may be cases like that, but being through the, the heavy turf, you're probably gonna see it every year, because that, what they're saying and seeing, you know, was that if, to limit the nitrogen, I think it was like to one or one and a half, you know, not go up to two and a half pounds annually, just cannot get the grass to grow well enough on heavy turf-use fields. So in order to do that, you need to go, go up to two and a half pounds annually, or whatever it was in, you know, yeah, I think it was, you know, to do that, so that's gonna probably be a reoccurring thing for the heavy-use fields, because their contention is if we don't ask for a waiver, we're not gonna be able to, uh, keep, keep the turf.
I think the products and things change periodically, maybe not even every year, but every couple of years, there's new stuff comes out, new techniques, and-
Well, they still have to, every year, they still have to put a, a new management plan, they have to meet the criteria, that they're, you know, that they're using best management practices, so I think we're covered. As technology or, or products advance, then they, they have to respond to that every year, so.
But, but they, it would be incumbent upon them, but the ones who's reviewing it would be you or us, and how do we have that awareness of what's new? So if we're looking at it, you know, how do we know what's new out there? Is that something you guys review before it comes to us, or do you get?
Yeah, I mean, any request would be in, and we, just like, we would review it anyway, just as if it didn't go to you, like, with the same diligence, and read their management plan, and ask questions, and like we did before in the past with them. And that's kind of, that whole process culminated in this amendment.
Right.
Because it just, it seemed to make sense to, to allow this for heavy-use turf fields, to increase it, but only under, you know, narrow circumstances. That's why you, you're not gonna see many waivers, I don't think, except for the, you know, P.A., and, well, uh, I think Swayze Parkway might be coming, Swayze, I, I heard about the, because they wanna, you know, they had that sewer project.
Yeah.
And looking to reestablish turf.
Trying to get good grass.
I, I, I guess the reason I think about that is Swayze Parkway and P.A. Field are directly next to rivers, so, I mean-
Yeah, that's where you're gonna, that's where the ordinance applies.
Right.
In the shoreline and wetland, it doesn't apply everywhere.
So, I mean, they're not like a hundred feet away, they're there, and so that's where, if new, if something new comes out, how does it, like, how do you find out about it? You got like a million things you're, you're juggling.
I don't know, it's just, you, you see what they're proposing, uh, and you react to it at that time.
So you almost have to just kind of research if the regs have changed every time you get a new?
Well, they have to submit a management plan every, every time they submit a waiver request. So they have to make the argument, and they're using the best management practices. But I will, you know, point note, point noted, and we, when we get those, we will be as diligent as, you know, Kristen's been very diligent about those, so-
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I, I, that's why I said my designee, because I, probably it would be Kristen. I mean, I'd do it too, but she, she's, she's knowledgeable about it, she, we, we had a soil scientist, we hired a soil scientist, uh, for the Healthy Lawns Committee, remember that?
Chip Osborn.
Yeah, yeah, so she, she learned a lot from them about, about that process, and about the, you know, what's available and so forth.
And I think he's, I think he agreed, uh, to, to be a contact person if, at some point, we needed to have something looked at more closely, so I think he was a resource which is helpful.
Yep, that's good.
Uh, Mister Chair, my only request or input on this is that, um, as a new board member, I don't have any background or history, and I think there's some value of, um, having board members, especially new board members, exposed on a regular interval, and it may not need to be every year, but at least every other year might be a good opportunity for somebody to come in and present a management plan, and for us to learn about what it's all about, for it to be on television so that residents can see why we care about fertilizer issues in the first place. So I guess, I wouldn't want it to be, you know, too far, um, from the board, that decision-making, um, just from purely an educational reason.
Good suggestion.
I mean, how many do we get in a year? Maybe we're just back to-
We've gotten none this year.
So maybe we just leave it as it is?
So, I mean, you're gonna, yeah, I mean, I-
It is, it's something that's a lot of attention in the public.
Outside of construction, like, you'll see quite a bit like, you know, uh, projects will, you know, ask for the one-year waiver to provide, you know, contractor's mix or whatever that has fertilizer in it, um, to get the site established. But, uh, those are, once, they're not coming back, you know, that if the development gets built, they'll use it, and then they're not coming back.
Yep.
So the reoccurring ones, I, I think the only one is P.A. So I would suggest if you do want it, to see them again, I'm, I'm not sure how that would work, like, you know, okay, this year you go, next year you don't, just don't designate me until, you know, you feel comfortable with it.
I mean, if it's not been a burden, I mean, it doesn't seem like we're handling them all the time, and it's a problem, so maybe just because of what you said.
No, I brought it up to someone, Swayze Parkway, I think, contacted Kristen and asked what the process was, and, and then she brought it up to me, and, and I said, "Okay, yeah, they just, I'll see if they wanna designate someone." So whatever the answer is, I'm fine with it either way. I mean, we can, we can certainly review it, take care of it, uh, if the board doesn't want to.
Yeah.
You know, wants to take, keep jurisdiction. Uh, but like I said, if you did designate me, if there was any issues, uh, or any, you know, I wouldn't hesitate to kick it to the board, like, it's not like, I'd be like, you know, it's like, "Oh, this is, you know, this warrants." I used to do those with minimal impacts, uh, at Historic District Commission, and I had authority to approve minimal impacts, um, you know, previous municipality I worked at, and, and I wouldn't hesitate, like, if it was kind of, okay, I'd kick it to the HTC, even if it met the minimum requirements of a minimal impact, I'd put it there because I thought, you know, important enough, so-
Yep.
I'm conscious of that, even if you did designate me, I would still, uh, throw anything-
Just keeping the board informed.
Needed board review to the board.
I think it's probably less about you needing us to help than making sure the public's aware that is interested because of the issues with nitrogen and fertilizers in general. So I think it's more public interest than, than that we're going to know anything that you don't know, because, if that's, if I'm catching your drift correctly.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
An announcement, if that's okay?
Well, please.
Um, so I just want to make a quick announcement, tomorrow, um, is going to be Arbor Day in the town of Exeter.
Okay.
Um, and there's going to be a celebration at 2:00 P M. in front of Lincoln Street School.
Good.
And, um, I hope that people can come out and check it out, it'll be just a very short program, um, but the weather looks nice, um, the Lincoln Street students are going to be involved, and, um, it'll be a great way to kind of learn about, um, some initiatives that are happening around town to, um, take note of our public trees and try to maybe establish, um, some management around our public trees and just celebrate the beautiful trees that we have in town. So I hope that you all and everyone watching can come join us tomorrow, Friday, 25, 2:00 P M.
Lincoln Street School. Thank you. That'd be a nice event. Anybody else have anything?
Just, uh, I'm putting that in, I guess, I know I, I got the email, but, uh, I'll be there.
Did you watch Columbo?
The, uh.
Yeah.
One more thing, no, I just, I don't know where we left it, I don't know where we left it on the fertilizer designee, are we still pondering it and for further table again for further discussion at some point? Or is there some consensus of the board?
I think the consensus is that you take care of it with your appointee, and at some occasion, bring it to, in your, in your planning report. Let us know about that, and maybe sometime, once every two or three years, if the academy comes in for, with some new fertilizer or something and wants to, we could ask them to come in and present it for the board and for the public, to understand more about the plan and why they're using what they're using.
Probably.
Because I think it's a, I think you get different opinions.
I think there's some diverging opinions, maybe, here.
I think there is. I don't think it's a consensus.
You don't?
I don't. Do we want to discuss it as a board more? Or are we done discussing fertilizer waivers? And letting Dave and his staff or designee?
Well, we've kind of laid out, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, I'm, I'm totally comfortable with Dave or Kristen doing this, but I think, I really respect Peter and Peter's comment about just public awareness and that this allows, it wouldn't take very long for somebody to.
I think that's a different, I personally take it as, excuse me, one, I personally take, I completely understand what Peter's saying. Um, you know, I think that it's a different, a little bit of a different, um, element. I would, I would suggest that a public awareness, uh, hearing or part of one of our hearings once a year, just in general, without necessarily burdening an applicant, uh, would be appropriate, and might be more educational than having them listen to a hearing.
Mm-hmm.
Myself, I mean, I'm not sure how many people you know that are watching us right now, but I know a lot of people that aren't. And I think that, you know, you've been involved, and I think a lot with the education on the healthy lawns, and I think that's, while having a hearing is good, I think that the point of allowing Dave and staff to do that work was to just make it a little easier on the applicant, that was the point of it.
Mm-hmm.
And I do respect, uh, the board, and I also respect Dave's ability to do that, and you, I have never had an issue with his discretion in those matters in the past with minor site things and everything else. I don't think, I can't think of a time when any of us have had a, Dave, we should have heard about this, kind of, a ti- a kind of a comment.
Right.
At least that I'm aware of. So from my perspective, I'm comfortable with allowing, uh, Dave and probably Kristen to act on those, um, and then, at their discretion, come back to us if it's, if they deem it appropriate. And I do think you should report it to us if it happens, I think that's helpful for us.
To me, report it on, as part of it.
Like a field modification type thing, like you talked.
Yep.
That's my.
Is that a motion?
Well, I, I think I.
I think we're discussing it still.
Yeah, because I think that's where I started out, that I don't have any issue with Dave and Kristen handling it, but I think as I listened to you all and then, then thought back on com- comments that I've heard from the public or people who even watched, you know, watched the P A one, for example, um, or, or, you know, just things I've heard, um, and it makes me think there is some public interest in it, and it has nothing to do with whether or not Dave and Kristen are able to do it, because I, no doubt they are. But if there were fifty of them a year or twenty of them a year, there's some big burden amount, it would be maybe different, but if we're only getting one or two or three a year, then maybe we keep that in the public, because there is public interest in this. And I think, I, like I say, originally, I think I was where you are, but I think just listening to the two of you and thinking about that, and thinking, we're talking once or twice a year, maybe just keep it in the public domain, because there is, nitrogen is a big deal in our waters, it's, and it's a problem. And it's still a problem, we didn't solve it with wastewater treatment plant, we took a very positive step.
Right.
But, I mean, it's, it's, it's still an issue that people are concerned about, so.
Aaron, oh, I just had a question for Aaron. You mentioned burdening the applicant, and I was wondering, how, how is it an additional burden to, what, what did you mean by that? Because they still have to prepare the management plan, they still have to prepare the waiver request.
I guess, in my experience, Jen, the easier you make it for the public to deal with government, the more apt they are to comply. I think when, um, an example of that for me is, I think our code enforcement department in Exeter is excellent, and I think they get a lot of compliance because of that. I think people actually do applications and get permits and do the things the right way, because when code enforcement comes out and works with them, they're not extremely difficult to deal with. There are towns that I do business in that are the exact opposite of that.
Yeah.
They're extremely difficult to deal with, so everybody just circumvents them. So in dealing with government issues personally, I like to try to streamline the process when I can. Um, and I think this is an example of that. I personally sat here and listened to P E do a pretty serious presentation at least, I think, three times, Gwen, probably, if you're.
Two, two times anyway, yes. Very thorough and.
And I mean, you know, for that group, they don't show up with like, one guy, it's like a team of fricking five or six people, you know that they've put, so that energy's still gonna happen, they're still gonna do with the plan, they're still gonna have the right contract, they're still gonna have the right execution, but for them to have to come up in front of us and then do a dog and pony show on top of it, that's what I meant. I don't find it necessary. I do think it is helpful, I think those plans are here, I think those resources are here too, and I think we have all, who have been exposed to them, have learned. So I agree with Peter's comment about the educational process, I think it is, there is validity there. But I think there's other ways to educate the community, which, um, I think, I know Gwen and the group were a big part of that, when they were trying to create that ordinance.
Yeah.
It was quite a good campaign going on.
So if we take away the planning board venue as that's how the public hears about it, we should define what the alternative venue is at the same time?
I think that's a Kristen Murphy arena.
Yeah, well, I agree.
It's a conservation group.
Well, yeah, I was just gonna say, because it, right before Jenna, that's what I was thinking, I was like, you know, there's probably more, if you're, if you're trying to say, okay, when and if an application comes in for fertilizer in the aquifer, we're gonna use that as a way to educate the public on fertilizer, I think there's a lot more effective ways to do that.
But I don't think that's what we're doing, I don't think we're educating the public on fertilizer, I think you have people in the public who are interested in what's happening with regards to fertilizer and nitrogen in the waters in Exeter, and so if something like this comes up, they might be interested and tune in, you know, to these discrete things. So I don't think it's that, I don't think people from the public that are interested are tuning in because they want to learn about fertilizer, most of the people who tune in already know something about it and are interested in what are the applicants asking for and what is the town telling them. I think that's the interest that the people in the public who tune in have. And, which, yes, is a segment of the population and probably not a majority, but it's, you know, certainly not a majority, but it's, I think there is a segment that is interested in that.
Okay, I didn't understand that, I thought it was more, because we.
Yeah.
Bob sent, Bob Loackey sent out a memo, uh, uh, during the last department meeting last month, offering like, he's got, they got a studio, they have things, they're always looking at.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's the venue for something like that.
Yeah, like, you know, run something continuously, but that's not what you're talking about. You're talking about basically saying there's people out there that will tune into the planning board because this is on the agenda.
Right, especially because we changed the rules, because we went from none, and then we changed the rules to make some allowances that we all agreed on and voted on. But I think, yeah, there's people that are tuned into that. Now, the other thing with Bob Loackey doing something to educate the public, that's great too, but I think it's a separate thing. Does that make sense?
Well, when the green lawns are put in, that, that, your committee worked with that, how to get the word out there and do a lot of things, so, yeah. So we still haven't decided, I think, back to what you said, of.
What, a motion? Are we done discussing?
Well.
Does anybody have any new insight they want to provide? Pete?
I'm happy.
Good.
Whatever that.
Mr. Chair, I guess, you know, I'm, I'm a little torn, because I'm sensitive about the burden on an applicant, but I guess I still feel like, um, as a new board member, I don't want to be at arm's length from these decisions, um, because I haven't been through them, so I guess maybe for other board members who've been through the process and understand it a little better, it's more comfortable, and I completely trust Dave and Kirsten, and so it's not, it's not about that whatsoever, it's just about how do I, um, stay up to speed with these issues as, and as, you know, the board term turns over over time, how do other board members stay up to speed on these issues if the decisions aren't before the board? So I think that's my, my main concern.
Yeah, it's usually kind of a pass along process, but the, the uniqueness of this, it doesn't come up very often. So, uh.
I think because it's unique, I've been kind of listening to everyone, I'm kind of thinking, we leave it the way it is, it doesn't happen that often, if it becomes a burden on time, then maybe we look at it again, and again, not that I don't trust David or Kirsten, that.
Right.
I think they could handle it certainly, but if, if, if in fact it is helping with the education process, then I'd say we leave it alone.
I think the academy will, will come in with one or two people, probably one person to deliver whatever information they have to you. I think if they come to the planning board, I think there'd be one or two people, I think that's all they had last time.
I don't think that's incredibly burdened to them.
Yeah, and they prepare a PowerPoint and so forth, so they definitely, and, and to Aaron's point, people do, I try to convince them otherwise all the time, but going to a public board is intimidating to a lot of people, and they can definitely, you know, like, if they can avoid it, they will, and compliance does come into play with that. Not saying that's the case here, but just, I, I agree with that.
Yeah.
With, with, people don't see it as like, oh, I'm just coming et cetera, on, on, you know, once and, and for an hour, they, they don't, the majority does not view it that way. They view it as a pretty big hurdle. I try to convince them all the time, that it's pretty painless, they're very workable, you know, it's just you meet the regulations and you get through, but that's not the reaction I get from folks, when, when you tell them, you know, the process. We're used to it, everyone kind of knows this, but most people aren't.
Yeah, yeah. Well, in public hearings, you know, the first time or two, people say, I can't speak in public, well, I said, you're speaking now, just tell us what you want. Okay, we'll do that.
Write a letter.
That's another way to do it, yeah.
Write a letter. There's another way to communicate. But it's up, you know, I mean, it doesn't matter which way you go with me, I mean, I, not making a recommendation, Kristen asked me about it, I said, well, I'll, I'll, I'll ask it, I'll ask the board.
Do you have an idea of wording for a motion?
Yeah, um.
Because I, I'm willing to make a motion, and then we can just vote and.
Yeah.
With this conversation.
Yeah, you know, just to designate the, uh, designate the town planner, they're designee to provide fertilizer waiver requests in accordance with the zoning ordinance.
So moved. Second. Moved and seconded.
So this is in favor of allowing Dave and the designee to do it, so if you're not in favor of that, you gotta vote no.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Dave, can you read the motion one more time?
Yeah, he was kind of like.
Well, I was thinking too, so I was kind of.
Oh.
Smelled something.
Uh-oh, now he's consulting.
Uh, let me write.
Caucus, I would.
See, he was gonna go to the table and write exactly what down what they said, they get the minutes and they do that.
Last year.
Mr. Chair, are you writing that?
A designate.
Because we have an edit. But if you had one.
Do alternates vote on this?
Four.
No, it's freaking ridiculous. You're not acting. You voiced your opinion, we appreciate it.
Okay.
You're quasi-alternate, board member. Yeah. That's funny.
Fertilizer.
Sorry about that, Dave.
No, no, that's fine, I got it.
How much time is?
I moved to designate the town planner, they're designee to provide fertilizer waivers in accordance with the zoning ordinance.
Sure.
Because I say the zoning ordinance, because it's in wetlands, it's in.
Is that different than what we said the first time, you think?
Nope, that's exactly the same, I would almost guarantee it.
Almost.
Well, I might say, you know, the.
Almost.
Can't wait to review these minutes for the next meeting.
If I were to guess, I would say it's a hundred percent.
That's actually what he said, though.
Okay, are we clear on the motion?
Yes.
Then, uh, we're gonna do a voice vote, those people in favor, please, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Extentions? Oh, excuse me, one opposed?
No, two, three.
Two opposed, okay.
How many's three down there, right?
You're not voting tonight, though.
No, that's right.
Sorry.
Are you four to three? I don't think there's any.
Okay.
One hand.
Any?
Yeah, let's do hands.
Let's do hand.
Five, four.
Hand motion.
All right, hands, please. Those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Switch hands.
One, two, three, four, four.
There's only seven of us.